I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Good job. Thank you Pastor Rodriguez, very much. So Jack, you're at Highlands Grove Elementary. What's your favorite subject?
Science.
Science, very good. Anything in particular?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry? Do you have a favorite science class, anything in particular in science, or just in general?
Um, that we do experiments and stuff.
Oh, good. Very good. And what do you want to do when you grow up?
I want to be a cop.
Police officer, very good. This guy right behind you, I think he's got a sign-up form for you. Well, Jack, thank you so much. You did a wonderful job. We appreciate you coming here and leading us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anyone here that you brought with you that you'd like to introduce?
My fabulous mother and my fabulous principal.
Very good. Please stand and be recognized. Well, Jack, thank you very much. We appreciate your leading us in the pledge this evening.
You're welcome.
So this school board meeting on February 26, 2019, of Polk County is called to order. And our first item on the agenda is acceptance of the agenda, Madam Superintendent. Do we have any revisions?
Yes, we do. Item C5, minutes of the...
January 8, 2019 Roundtable Meeting at Backup. Item C14, bid recommendations, replace backup. Item R114, FEMA Appeal Representation Add as an Emergency Item. This concludes all of our revisions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So this time I would entertain a motion to accept the February 26, 2019 School Board Meeting Agenda as revised.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the February 26, 2019 Board Meeting Agenda as noted and revised.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is acceptance of the February 26, 2019 School Board Meeting Agenda as revised. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, we have some special recognitions.
Yes, we do. I would like to ask School Board Member Sarah Fortney to please step to the front. Next, I'd like to ask Paul Webb of Workforce Education to please come forward in recommendation and recognition of AgriFest.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. School Board, I'd like to introduce our Polk County Federation Vice President Hannah Tercios, who's going to say just a little bit about AgriFest and our appreciation to each one of you.
AgriFest is a week-long event that teaches fourth graders about the agriculture industry. This year's AgriFest is going to be from March 5th to 11th and March 18th to 22nd. We would like to thank the Polk County School Board, the Foreign Bureau, and the University of Florida extensive program for sponsoring this annual event. As a thank you for our appreciation, we would like to give all of you a flood of strawberries.
And just so you don't have to carry them all the way back to the office, we'll wheel them back to the office and you can pick them up after the meeting. But thank you all for everything you do to help us with AgriFest.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. And if you have some further questions, we'll get to the next one. Thank you, and that concludes our special recognitions for today.
Thank you Superintendent Bird. At this time, I would invite anyone from the public who would like to come forward to make comments about any item on the agenda. If you'd like to come forward and comment on any item on the agenda, please do so at this time. Okay? Moving on, we have three sets of minutes to approve. This time I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 8, 2019 School Board Roundtable Discussion Minutes. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move for approval.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the January 8, 2019 School Board Roundtable Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second item on the agenda is C6, and this is approval of the minutes of the January 22nd, 2018 Work Session. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the January 22nd, 2018 Work Session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last set of minutes is C7, Approval of the Minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 Board Meeting. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move for approval.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the January 22nd, 2019 Board Meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of the Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the Consent Agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our regular agenda items, we have R110, and this is approval of the Schenck Schultz Architecture Contract in the amount of $2,999,950 for high school AAA in the northeast part, northeast area of Polk County. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve AAA Architects Standard Contract as presented for $2,999,950.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the Schenck Schultz Architecture Contract in the amount of $2,999,950 for high school AAA in the northeast area of Polk County. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The last regular agenda item is item R111, and this is approval of the Purchase and Donation Agreements with Tierra del Sol in the amount of $2,434,875. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So we have a motion on the floor. This is item R111, Approval of the Purchase and Donation Agreements with Tierra del Sol in the amount of $2,434,875. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, do you have a report for us?
I do. I would like to say congratulations to Auburndale High School Boys Soccer Team. This weekend, they actually traveled to D-land and became the state champions. I believe it's been 12, is it 12 years? That they have not been, so congratulations to them. They will actually have a parade this Thursday at 3:00 PM, and they will start at B-Fo Brady's. So congratulations to Auburndale High School and the boys soccer team. Also, a school board retreat will be held on Tuesday, March 5, 2019, at the Lakeland Health Clinic, beginning at 9:00 AM. A work session is scheduled for Tuesday, March 19, 2019, at 12:30 PM, to be held in the Superintendent's Conference Room, followed by the 5:00 PM School Board Meeting in the Auditorium located at 1915 South Floor Avenue, Bartow. That concludes my announcements for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Bridges?
Mr. Chair, as discussed at the work session, request you find cause to amend the agenda to add the item for the FEMA Appeals Representation Agreement with John Stidham and Tina Nicholson.
I find cause to do so.
In that event, I would request a vote to approve it.
Okay, so could you phrase the motion for us, please?
Yes, the motion is to approve the Representation Agreement with John Stidham and Tina Nicholson to represent the Board in FEMA Appeals.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
I just think probably this wasn't on the agenda, so it's probably something we need to explain real quick.
I'd be happy to. We anticipate that some of our FEMA work project claims may be denied. That is not unusual, but we anticipate that might happen shortly, and there's not another school board meeting until the middle of March. So I have spoken with Mr. Stidham and Ms. Nicholson, who represented the Board very capably, in connection with insurance claims arising from the same storm, two different matters, insurance claims on one side, FEMA grant funds on the other, and they've indicated a willingness to represent the Board on a contingency basis with a fee of 3% of any recoveries.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Thank you, Mr. Townsend, for suggesting that as well. Any further comments?
I would just add that, you know, contingency in this case means we're not paying them by the hour. You know, if we collect, they'll pay it out of what we collect.
Okay. Any further comments? So the motion on the floor is stipulated in the records by Mr. Bridges. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have additional comments, Mr. Bridges?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. That could be a big job, and it is very nice to have professionals of that caliber on board to help. Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing that to us in a timely manner. Ms. Matthews, did you have any comments?
I never spoke to you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Matthews. So we'll move on to Board Member Reports. We'll start with Mr. Townsend.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I would have talked about a couple of things at the works session, but we ran out of time. First, I just want to say we've had a very long but productive day, I think. Wanted to thank Mrs. Fields for being the driving force behind having the master board training this morning. I think we had some really frank and good discussions that I think are going to lead to better operations and protocols and how we move things forward together as a Board and leadership team. So I was very pleased with how the morning went. Secondly, a couple of weeks ago, and this is just kind of an operational suggestion, several of us who are Board Members were subject to kind of a nuisance public records request with some texts and things like that. Having anticipated something like that, I some time ago bought a text organization system. It was really easy to search and organize the texts and download them. I would really recommend that we, as a Board or a District, invest in, you know, it's like 40 bucks, have that capability for folks here, you know, because you never know when anybody's text will get requested. So that's just a thing. The product I use is called Touch Copy, but I think there's a million other of them. So just, I would urge that we think about that. The transportation issue, I was pleased to see the extension for the Special Needs charters. I would, I noticed that the extension was for a year. The way I understand this, we have a good path to getting them self-sufficient in transportation, but it may take a year for each one or some extended period of time. I would hate to put a specific time period on it rather than just get it done correct correctly. If it takes two years to get them both, I would urge that we do that rather than just cut them like, let's, we have a path toward getting it dealt with. Let's deal with it rather than cutting them off, is what I would urge the Board Members and Staff to do. And finally, just one other thing. We're about to embark on, I think, a pretty important, it's largely focused on ESE, but not entirely. It's kind of focused on what their focus is, struggling students. We have, I think, potentially a very helpful review of that with some on-the-ground recommendations. But I think it's very, very important, and I didn't get a chance to come back and emphasize this, that whatever that recommends, it can't be one of these things where it's teachers need to do this, teachers need to do that. There needs to be support recommendations that are executable, that come with price tags, you know, hopefully. So it just needs to be a practical recommendation, and I just wanted to reemphasize that. And that's really all I have to say. Normally, I would have, we would have discussed this a little bit more in the works session, but we just kind of ran out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Ms. Fortney?
I wanted to congratulate Mulberry High School Girls Basketball Team. They set some records, and they, I got to watch them play. They fought hard, but in the end, Titusville Astronaut had a six-foot-ten somebody in the middle. As soon as, as soon as I walked in that gym, I was like, we are in trouble. You know, she was huge, tall, but they, many of them, they were scrappy, and it was great. Got to see a few basketball games. I got to attend quite a few Black History Month events, which is always a pleasure. I want to congratulate Beth Cummings and her staff. Winter Haven did an all-county guitar performance. It was unbelievable, the work that our teachers and our kids do. We should be so proud. And her staff, of course. I got to judge the history fair at the Bartow Civic Center, one of the categories. That was really interesting, because I never got to do anything like that as a classroom teacher. So it was really kind of cool. And Mr. Hill, Auburndale High School rocked that too as well. So anyways. Yesterday, I attended what's called an altogether conference for LGBTQ issues in K through 12 in our schools and learned a lot. And I urge every one of you to call our state representatives and let them know that we do care about our public schools and we need help, not starvation. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things. I attended the All-County Theater Festival, which we have once a year, where all of our middle school and high school students compete in various things, from acting to singing to monologues, duet scenes, group scenes, and you name it. And I tell you, it's just an awesome opportunity to witness some of the best of our talents in our school district. And I also want to thank Beth Cummings for her leadership in continuing this in our county. And Mr. Rob Fritz, who's been gracious enough over the past few years to head that up. It's a big job to get judges and everything lined up for the weekend, and the kids learn so much. They go into workshops as well as they actually get to compete. So just want to say thank you to all those that are involved, all the judges, and certainly to the kids and parents who support it and come out strong every year. In addition to that, I want to encourage everybody, everybody drives, right? Everybody who drives, raise your hand. Everybody? Okay. All right. So this pertains to you, maybe, if you would consider. Our wonderful Polk Education Foundation has had a tag, it's called a License for Learning Tag. This is the old one with the apple, over 20 years, and they've just come out with a new one. And on it, it is featured a beach scene, as you hopefully can tell, I don't know if you can. And then there's two kids underneath the tree. One is reading, and one is using technology. And I'm very pleased to announce that from the cost of the license plate, $20 goes directly to the Polk Education Foundation, which supports scholarships for our students right here in our county. So the next time you need to get a new tag for a new driver, or renew a tag, or a new car, or used car, whatever you have, it would be wonderful if you would please consider purchasing a License for Learning, because $20 goes directly to the Polk Education Foundation. And from last year, the total tag sales brought in about $11,000. So that's quite a bit of money that goes directly back to our kids. So hopefully, I'll see a bunch of those in the parking lot as the year ensues. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to do a shout-out to the Winter Haven Rotary Club. The last Saturday in January, they hosted the Basket of Books, and along with that, our staff that graciously came out on a Saturday morning when it was 50 degrees outside and helped host Basket of Books, which we were able to give away literally a basket full of books to kids ages three to five, to get them, books in their hands before they start in our classrooms. It was a great family day. They provided lunch. They did everything. It was no cost, to my knowledge, to the school district. And it was all, you know, them just trying to get involved and make sure that our kids have access to literature before they get to school. The second thing, I was trying to pull up the date. Beth is also going along with an all-county guitar concert. Beth is bringing Tangi Zhang into, he's coming to a couple of the schools during the day to do a masterclass, but then he also is doing a performance at the Ritz Theater on March 12 at 7:30 PM. It's $5 for adults and free to students, but it's sure to be a lot of fun. The Ritz Theater holds up to 600 people, so I expect to see all of you there, because it's going to be a blast. And then the last thing is, I just want to thank our Winter Haven Principals particularly. I attended the education breakfast at the Chamber two weeks ago, and they said, you know, there's a couple Principals that normally come. Well, I thought they meant a couple, but it was almost every Principal in Winter Haven, and they were there to show the community, just to say thank you, and to say, you know, this is what we need, this is how you're helping us, we appreciate your support. And just to watch that dialogue of how our community can get engaged in our schools, and our Principals welcoming our community to get engaged in our schools was so encouraging. So I just want to give a shout-out to them for being involved and not just, you know, I know getting out of the classroom, getting out of their schools sometimes is hard, they have a million other things they could be doing, but for taking the time to show their schools off to the community, I think is huge. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Ms. Fields?
Yes, sir. I have a couple items here. As I said earlier today, I had an opportunity to visit McLaughlin Fine Arts School, and it was amazing to see the great things that they're doing there in that community. I also wanted to congratulate Ms. Bird on receiving the LB Brown Leadership Award, and I think it's probably within observance of Black History Month as well. Have really been attending a lot of the events throughout the county, and Ms. Fortney and I attended a couple together. We attended the 17th Annual MLK Junior Essay Challenge Contest at the Bartow Civic Center, and the kids were just amazing. And the teachers worked extremely hard with them, preparing them for their presentation. And we want to shout-out to all of the recipients of the awards. And Ms. Fortney and I also attended the annual advocacy luncheon at the Polk Museum, and that was interesting as well, just getting a chance to hear about the great things that they're doing at the museum and in our community. Also got a chance to attend my first Head Start Policy Council Meeting in January, and as always, they're doing a great job serving our students and meeting them and their needs. And I had my second town hall, an evening of listening for parents and for educators at Sleeper Hill Middle School, and it was, I think, amazing to hear the parents share their concerns and share the great things that they feel is happening within their schools, and also getting to hear directly from the educators about their concerns and questions that they might have, and we're going to be going back, as we did last time, and addressing those questions and posting them on our, on my Facebook page here at the, not Facebook, my school board page here on the district website. And I think the last thing is, I had a chance to go to Bartow Middle School. One of the teachers invited me over to look at her doors, and all the doors are decorated for Black History Month, and it's just amazing how they have captured not only amazing illustrations, but also historical facts, and implementing that within the classroom, and also the entire corridor was just decorated throughout the building. And just want to commend them for doing a great job and for celebrating and embracing Black History Month. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Chair, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple of things from the meeting earlier. Just, we've been talking about behavior support, so I'm looking forward to a work session where we can discuss, from the committee that was formed, our current behavior supports that are offered in our schools. The other thing was, I was very pleased today that we've made the decision to have an outside company look at our practices in ESE and Gen Ed. With 80% of our students who receive support services in general education, it's going to be very important to see what they have to say. I know that's going to bring recommendations, and I just want to make us aware of how the budget might, need to look at the budget being realigned to meet those expectations. So that's very encouraging. I had some fun visits over the, since the last board meeting. I got to be guest speaker at Lake Gibson's preschool. I had no idea Lake Gibson High School had a running preschool on campus, and so I got to meet some of the students, and we talked about children they might have come into their preschools or their school classrooms with developmental disabilities and what that looks like. So it was very neat to hear from their perspective of talking about kids of varying abilities. I also was very lucky to get a tour of this campus, and I only got to do half a tour because there are so many buildings and portables and extra space here on, at 1915 Floral Avenue. I encouraged my other Board Members to get around. I had no idea how extensive the campus layout is and how many people we truly employ that may not even recognize you when you come to the building, but you should go in and meet them. I met with Representative Tom Cow, who I will be meeting with all of our delegation as I go to Tallahassee in March, more than a couple of occasions before the end of session. And a really exciting thing I got to attend, and I don't know that you know this, but Polk County has had ice hockey here at our district for about 18 years, which I had no idea. George Jenkins housed a lot of this, and it was players that made up from all over the county, but these kids and volunteers would drive 45 minutes one way for practice or to compete when they had games. It was amazing that they've kept it up. The dedication to those students needs to be recognized, but the good news is, with the opening of Lakeland Ice Arena this summer, we will have home ice for these hockey teams, and we hope to grow ice hockey in Polk County so that all schools have that available to them, and children, no matter who they are, their experience level, will be able to learn a new sport and become, to love ice hockey here in Polk County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. So I'm sure that's being, on some level, is a product of Tampa Bay Lightning. They seem to be doing quite well right now. I don't normally watch hockey, but I tune in to watch them.
They are involved, and we hope, I think they hope, I've just been sitting in on meetings, I don't play ice hockey, but I was very interested that we have so many students that are involved in ice hockey, and they get up so early in the morning, or figure skating, and drive to Brandon, and then come back and go to school. I mean, I was just shocked that that's what we do. But the Lightning is involved. They hope to make a pavilion on I-4, it's at Memorial on I-4, so when people are driving, they'll pass Poly Tech, and the next landmark would be a Tampa Bay Lightning Pavilion in Lakeland for ice hockey.
Thank you. So we, many of the comments you've heard this evening were a product of a shortened work session. Well, it wasn't shortened, it was long, we just ran out of time. And my comments probably would have been made there as well, but I'm happy to share them with the public. Travis Hudson is Senator from District 7 in St. Johns County, is proposing legislation that would allow students to, who are not interested in attending college, to substitute courses that otherwise would be college-ready courses for certificates, career-ready certificates, which means that when they graduate from high school, they would have certificates that would have prepared them for entry directly into the workplace. And that's something that's been, something I've been advocating for since I've been on the Board, so I was very pleased to see that. So I would ask my colleagues on the Board if you favor that, and certainly our public to reach out to Mr. Hudson and support his legislation. And that concludes my comments. And that concludes my comments.